All right, welcome to the Public Safety Committee. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, August 9th, and we have a pretty full agenda. And we have a full committee. So, thank you, colleagues, for being here on time as well. Appreciate that. With that, we've got a number of speaker cards, probably from the same person. All from the same person. All right. So Herman, if you want to come on up, you've got two minutes on all the items. And then you'll have one minute for general public comment. And then, under the two minutes, you'll stay on the agenda items. Otherwise, you'll forfeit your time, including your general public comment. General public comment will be addressed only to matters pertaining to this committee and won't be addressed to any of the committee members, but matters pertaining to this committee only. You know the rules.
Okay. I'm first going to do my general public comment. See, my service dog has a license, and people say, "Why don't you pay for your license in the city of Los Angeles?" But I keep trying to ask Steve Soboroff.
Those are not matters pertaining to this committee.
I'm taking it back.
Matters pertaining to this committee only for general public comment. Those are the rules. That's for the PAU committee.
Fuck the cadet program, then. Fuck all cadet programs and fuck all explorer programs. They should be shut down because you shouldn't be...
What's the meaning? Fucking kids. Ten years on the job and you want to be fucking kids? That's disgraceful. All of you should be a fucking shame to yourself, you fucking asshole, my general public comment, for disrupting me under the Brown Act just because some little doof. Now I'm going into the general agenda, fool.
Item 13, State and Community Corrections on Proposition 47, Safe Neighborhoods. Well, we should elect our elected officials to go out to every school and announce that we are no longer conducting a cadet program due to the so-called Six Flag...
Fucking at the Six Flag fucking by the police.
And then we go into item 23. Stay on topic, asshole.
I'm trying.
Border Police Commissioners Report. Fucking acceptance of fucking donations or fucking portable force option. Now, most of us don't know what the fuck a portable table force option is, other than that we have a judge by the name of Ms. TMUTRO, Ms. Goodson, who's very good at the temporary restraining order. And she supports Police Department detective support and Vice Division to be utilized for mental health. Well, you know, motherfucker, I suffer from such a disability, but I still have the capacity to come here and fuck with your mind. It's called O'Connor versus Donaldson. Ain't that a bitch? And then I go to item 6. Devil-dwarf with the fake badge. Border Police Commissioners Report. Relative to the recommendation of qualified vendor... Now, we don't know if the vendor is selling youth condoms or not to provide official police... Oh, but it's for a garage. My mistake. I'm sorry. It's the mental health kicking in this morning. I didn't get my third cup of coffee. Regarding storage services... Well, leave the fucking mental health people alone and stop towing their fucking cars. Then you wouldn't have to pay for this additional recommendation of vendor... What? Garage towing. And then, in conclusion to my last item, for victim assistance, I believe you should pay Wayne Spindler off so he can get the fuck out of Los Angeles for the fucking conditions of those TMUTROs and TROs.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. That concludes all of general public comments. So, seeing no other general public comment, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. Okay, with that, colleagues, I was going to propose a number of items for consent. Item 13, first of all, I believe we need to continue for... Till the next meeting. So, without objection, we'll go ahead and continue that. I think we're waiting for another correction on that item to come back. So, that'll be continued. I'd like to hear items 1, 2, 3, and 7. 1, 2, 3, and 7, and then the remaining items, with the exception of 13, for consent.
Move the items.
All right. So, moved. And without objection, that'll be the order. Those are approved. If there are any technical corrections on any of those items or CAO reports that needed to be adopted, then we'll have to do that as well. Are there any technical corrections or CAO reports for those?
No, sir.
Okay. Then those are approved?
Item 16.
Okay. And then, I was under... I understood from my notes here as well that item 16 had a technical correction on the actual date.
No?
I believe the date was supposed to be February instead of what was agendized, or what was on the report.
Okay. If that's the case, then if that technical correction needs to be made, then we'll approve it with that as well. If that's the case, you can double-check. And if so, we'll make it so. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and hear items 1, 2, 3, and 7. Let's go ahead and start off with item 1.
Item 1 is a motion, Bonin, Englander, Bloomingfield, and a Department of General Services report relative to the current state of the Los Angeles Fire Department helicopter fleet.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, if you could just go ahead and walk us through... You've read the motions and the reports and the ones you've submitted. Well, ask... Go ahead and introduce yourselves and walk us through where we're at.
Scott Davidson, Chief Pilot for Los Angeles Fire Department.
Rick Holmes, Battalion Chief, Commander of the Air Operations Section.
Doug Postle, Fleet Services, Chief Inspector for the Helicopter.
And Richard Colson, Fleet Services Director.
So, if you could walk us through the recommendations and your written report. You gave us a... I believe at their June meeting, we heard a preliminary verbal report and the various recommendations as well as... I'm sure you received Councilmember Bonin's letter as well. Feel free, any one of you, to just jump in. Seriously.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. You want us to go through the recommendations that we had in our report?
Please.
Okay. So, let's say, so this report gives a background of LAFD, LAPD, and DWP aircraft fleets and recommends short- and long-term plans to address critical requirements to maximize helicopter availability. Important components of the short-term plan are to, one, recognize fire season as year round; two, to realign Augusta AW-139 48-month inspection schedules to perform only one inspection per year.
If we're saying fire season year-round, we should just eliminate "season." Never mind. Okay, keep going.
Three, to hire the helicopter mechanic position approved in the 1718 budget; four, to request two additional helicopter mechanic positions. The two helicopter additional positions would provide more timely inspections and maintenance of aircraft, but would not guarantee the availability of three medium-duty aircraft at all times. Important components of the long-term plans are for GSD, LAFD, LAPD, and DWP to begin discussions on MOAs, and for LAFD through future annual budget requests to increase its fleet configuration to seven helicopters consisting of five medium and two light-duty So, those were what we had recommended in the report.
Okay. And have we put and had a CAO recommendation on the total cost to implement all the recommendations on this?
The only thing that we can speak to is the one helicopter mechanic position that was in the 1718 budget, in that we've been approved for and we're in the process of hiring.
Okay.
Outside of that, no.
Great. Okay. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions on this. Seeing none, what I'd like to do, colleagues, is ask the CAO to pencil out the costs on implementing all of the recommendations, both in your report as well as Councilmember Bonin's letter, and forward this matter over to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay.
And then, we can have the discussion in depth on there. Do you guys want to add anything to this?
Yeah, I would like to just highlight two specific areas that I think are essential to the operations of the Fire Department and accomplishing its mission along the lines of life safety, rescue, fire suppression. Following the Fire 3, the tragic Fire 3 fatality, there were three separate reports that came out that highlighted areas that I believe are specific to some of the issues that we're discussing here. For the sake of time, I'll just focus on two of them. One is a moving away from a platform of three different types of aircraft and moving into a platform with two different types of aircraft. That, more than anything, is based on safety, and I'll let Chief Pilot Davidson speak to the specifics of the different aircraft we're talking about. But our overall goal is to operate out of two different types of aircraft to provide interoperability with our pilots and overall safety of the operations. In order to do that, we need to look at a platform of two helicopters typing. So, we've accomplished that. We've gone from the Bell 412 and the AW-139s to the AW-139s specific to our medium aircraft. We're currently using the 206s for our light helicopters. The problem that we're incurring right now is just a lack of availability. The maintenance on the AW-139s or the newer medium helicopters is a little more extensive than we saw with the 412s, and we've got documentation to support that. So, what we're really pushing for here is our fifth AW-139 medium helicopter and adding one light helicopter for a complement of five mediums and two light helicopters. In the past, our complement has been five mediums and one light. So, we'd like to move forward in adjusting our fleet to five and two as opposed to five and one and expedite the purchase of our fifth AW-139. All of this is in alignment with the three reports that came out as a result of Fire 3. The issue that we've had all along has been cost constraints. If we were able to follow our original plan, we would have already purchased the fifth 139. So, we'd like to continue discussions along those lines to expedite that process.
Do we have any... On that front, do we have any... I know we have mutual aid, obviously, with other municipalities, particularly with our fleet. And do we have any contracts with any other cities for air operations?
Yes, we have an agreement with LA County to share resources.
But that's a shared resource, not a contract. In other words, they're not paying us on standby.
Mutual aid, it's an MOA.
It's mutual aid, right. So, that's a little different.
Correct.
As an example, the example that I would give is we contract... San Fernando, the city of San Fernando, contracts with us for fire service, an EMS. They pay us an annual contract to fulfill that obligation. The county, obviously, contracts with half the cities, 44 cities in the county, for sheriffs. And now, Metro contracts with LAPD for the portion of policing our rail system within the city boundaries, where sheriffs used to cover that before. So, we started that July 1st. Have we looked at the possibility of covering with contracts for some shared cost?
We have not, and I could anticipate that the issue that we would run into there is the availability of aircraft and surrounding jurisdictions that could support that. We work closely with LA County. By the way, regionally, they're the only other large department within the area that could support something like that. They have the same challenges as we do. They're actually in the process of purchasing two additional aircraft as we speak and outfitting those. So, you know, on a daily basis, we're anywhere from, you know, 50% to 70% of our fleet being available.
Right.
And they're in the same boat. And that's just, you know, the maintenance that we incur on a daily basis, some scheduled, some not scheduled. So, the feasibility of that, I think, is definitely worth looking at. I just don't know if that opportunity would be there based on their existing aircraft.
Well, I'm looking at if there's possibilities for cost sharing. That could bring on additional maintenance and cover all those costs, as well as acquisition of equipment and personnel to cover those costs. And then, we get the benefit of having the equipment and maintained at a higher ratio with those shared economies, which is the same reason it works for the Sheriff's Department with 44 other cities, the same sort of reason we've taken it on, or one of the many reasons with LAPD and Metro. Something that I would consider, something to suggest that you perhaps look at, meeting with the Contract Cities Association of the County. They're the ones that represent all the contract cities in the county, and something that we might want to look at.
Understood.
Great. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's a great recommendation on forging that relationship with contract cities. So, I just want to thank Mr. Bonin for shedding light on this critical issue. Timing, as we know in public safety, is critical, whether we have resources on the ground or in the air. Seconds do matter when it comes to preserving life or property. In my district, I think we see you, to our chief pilot, we see you a lot during those cliff rescues, and appreciate your service, you and your team. And I feel that these salary costs for the two helicopter mechanics, indicating in the report $146,752, is worth every penny. And looking forward to having this go through Budget and Finance for your recommendation, Mr. Chair, and move forward on getting these mechanics online so that we can respond quickly and safely to preserve both life and property. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll go ahead and move this item to Budget and Finance. Oh, did you want to...
I'm from the Department of Water and Power. Just like, make...
Oh, sure. Yep. If you could do it on a microphone.
Good morning, once again. My name is Tom Patzloff. I'm from the Department of Water and Power, Fleet Aviation and Services. I just want to say that Councilmember Bonin's proposal, for the most part, is fine with us. We do have concerns about the aviation manager, and it's something that we would like to discuss. His memo indicates that it's for maintenance. And if it is for maintenance and it's through GSD, that's something we would definitely support. However, if it's going to expand the scope and get into operations or other areas, we are significantly different from the Police and Fire Department, and we would certainly like to discuss that further. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Good point. All right. So, colleagues, we'll go ahead and move this over, ask the CAO for a report on total cost, and ask that it be sent over to Budget and Finance. Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Our next item is item 2. And I don't believe there's anybody here from the Fire Department to report on item 2 at this time. Is that correct? So, here's where we're at with item 2, colleagues. This is for a implementation of a false alarm fee for the Fire Department. As we well know, the Fire Department gets a lot of false alarm calls, and we get zero reimbursement for that, unlike the Police Department that has a fee schedule for false alarms. And for those that have their first false alarm, they actually have the ability to go online and take a course, so they don't have to pay anything. They have to be permitted. There's a different fee schedule that if they have no permit for an alarm, it's a higher fine because it's a requirement in the city of Los Angeles to actually have a permit for an alarm. Fire Department has no such program. This motion was introduced five and a half years ago. This will be on every agenda for the Public Safety Committee until the Fire Department steps forward with a plan. It's shocking that this has not yet been implemented five and a half years later. So, this will be on every agenda for the Public Safety Committee from here on out until this is implemented. And that is... Move to the next agenda, then. So, the next item will be item 3, a verbal report on the issue of affecting the LAPD's dispatch system. This is... Commander, thank you very much for being here.
Good morning, Councilmen. What I'd like to be able to do is take the moment. I want to address three areas in the agenda item number three. So, the first, we'll talk a little bit about the outage and what happened and where we are and some lessons learned or what we learned out of it. The second, I want to talk about the non-emergency telephones at the Valley stations, and I would hope and request that the committee would be able to have us move forward to get those phones installed. And then, the last, we'll talk a little bit about customer service on the motion item that we were here before and where LAPD is going with that, if that is okay with the committee.
Great. Thank you. And colleagues, just so you know what this is, I know you guys know, but for those listening in, we had the outages at the dispatch centers recently, which is the... From my recollection, the first of its kind, where we actually had no dispatch services out of, if you can imagine that, for the Police Department, including our mobile system. And fortunately, we do have a redundant system in the Valley that was set up after the earthquake for just this reason. But it took hours to deploy services. They were running at 50% capacity, and this was at a heightened time as well. So, we went on a citywide tac alert, which meant that any officer working that shift as well had to stay on through and to watch until they were relieved. We don't know what the cost or how many people actually that affected, but the bottom line is there's an officer safety issue on this. There's also a response issue. And... But it's the first of its kind. And it was a technology issue, and one that... That's why we're addressing it here today. So, thank you for being here. And thank you, by the way, Commander. Thank you for being so responsive. I know you've been on the phone with me.
So, and again, I appreciate it, and I think it's an opportunity also as far as we had the catastrophe, but it was also an opportunity. The auditors did... The controller did an audit, and one of the things that they recommended was that we bring our system down and actually go through the exercise. I thought that was crazy. No way we would ever bring our system down. But this gave us the opportunity to do that. So, on July 28th, at about 11:10, one of our UPS broke. And a UPS is kind of like an uninterrupted power source. And so, we did not lose power from DWP, and nor did we lose it for... So, we had power to come to the center. We just lost the ability to process it in a manner that would be safe for all of our equipment. That system went down. We do have redundancy, as the Councilman said, but at that particular time, GSD was doing a three-week maintenance on the secondary UPS. So, it was like the best of all worlds to come together at this particular time. So, what we had to do, and the captain here at Communications, Captain Storker, did a great job, taking an immediate assessment, just determined what we had and could we get this up in a matter of, you know, hours? The determination was no. We had no idea what was causing it. We had no way of getting back on. Within 15 minutes, the decision was made to shut down the Metro and move everybody to the Valley. So, that would require, and he'll be able to answer more questions, but that would require all the PSRs and all the resources at the Metro to get into their personal cars and drive over. The resources that we had at that time at Valley, they have to command everything, and exactly what the Councilman said. We were working at 50% of our capacity. So, those same dispatchers had to do the radio. They had to pick up the 911 calls. They had to pick up the non-emergency. We were in that mode for about 2 hours and 40 minutes to get us back up and running. So, we finally got our resources back up. We had our 911 working. We had our radio working. We had our CAD. But what we weren't able to get back up in that three-hour period and lessons learned for us, we were not able to get the mobiles up. And I'll explain a little bit about what the mobiles will do. So, within three hours, we were up and we were running. We had every... We were able to switch over our CAD that was down to our disaster recovery MCAD, which, again, lessons learned. We've never went to that CAD before, so there was a little bit of learning lessons to get that turned on. But we don't... We did not have a redundancy or a disaster recovery for the mobile. So, those are the lessons learned. So, we only have one. So, we were out for about 26 hours without mobile operations. And what that means is the PSRs or the dispatchers, they can create the call, but they can't send the call to the officer so they can get it up on their computers. For the old Gs, the people that have been on the department for a while, and we know how to operate, we get our paper, we take... But for the young kids, that... They have to do everything on verbal. The other piece that we lost is the ability to do clets, and that's the ability then to, from the mobile, and to get on the air and to run suspects and to run cars. So, we lost that piece. We had no real ability to get back up. The second lesson that we learned is if our two UPSs go back up, there's only one way to reconnect, right? And that would be to connect directly from the power to our servers. And for us, that is a risk. And so, we really had to take the time to assess the risk, to get the power correct, connected. A lot of our warranty is under contingency that if you connect power to the servers in our service system, that you shall protect it with a UPS. So, we had to do a workaround to get that set up, which we did not have before. So, lessons learned on that and a good exercise. So, we do now have that. We're going to be meeting... We're going to be putting together a committee, and in that committee, we're going to talk about building a redundancy in the UPS after the two UPSs break, and we have to do a workaround. So, for us, yes, it was chaos, but it was a great opportunity for us to learn, a great opportunity for us to grow. We are getting ready to putting in... Put in a new CAD system, and that's a perfect opportunity to see all the things that we didn't have in this, to make sure that our CAD and our mobiles have the redundancy that was there. So, I will... If you want more information on what went out on the UPS, we have GSD. I believe they're in the audience. They can come forward and answer the questions. If you want to talk more about the operations of GSD Dispatch, the operations, I have Captain Storker here that would be able to speak. And then, when we're done with questions, I'd like to move on to the telephones.
Great. Okay. Colleague, any questions on this? Okay. One question I have on the UPS. My guess is they're about 16 years old, 17 years old?
That is correct. I believe they were installed, and GSD can help me with that, but I believe 201 is correct.
2001. What's the shelf life of those? Do we know?
I want to say we passed the shelf life, and that's why they were doing the overhaul. But I have India here, and she can speak a little bit more on that.
Hi, India Griffin, Director of Building Maintenance, GSD. The lifecycle for UPS is approximately 10 years. About five years ago, we had these particular UPSs rebuilt because we were unable to identify the funding for a full replacement. What we were doing was conducting maintenance to...
How much are they for a full replacement?
We're getting estimates right now, and it looks like we can do both sites for about $1 million. That's a real ballpark estimate right now.
Per UPS?
Four, because there's two UPSs at each site.
Right.
So, if we look at Metro and Valley, it's about $1 million. They're expensive. They're about $100,000 each, another $100,000 for installation, so you're looking at about 200,000.
That's $500,000.
200,000 per UPS times four UPSs. So, somewhere around 800,000, probably a little bit higher than that. But again, that's a real ballpark right now. We are having our contractor finalize a proposal for us, and we'll work with LAPD once we get those final numbers.
Okay. And is there any alternatives to those? Have we looked at and worked with DWP? I mean, we've, you know, operate the largest municipally-owned utility in the world. I would think they have some options of power systems that are protected, which is exactly what this does. Have we looked to them for guidance?
The UPSs that we currently have deployed at all of the critical sites are Liebert Technologies, and they are industry leader in UPSs. They are really the best of the best. What we have is very, very dependable and reliable UPS systems. They are aging, and that is part of the problem. We have not received our final report from Liebert yet as to the exact cause of this failure, but there's speculation that it was an internal circuit breaker. Those circuit breakers have been replaced. Now, the parts are pretty much back to new, but the entire system is still aged.
Right. Okay.
So, as far as DWP, we...
Okay. So, we don't think it was the UPSs that failed, but the circuit breakers that were behind them?
Inside, internal to the UPS. So, it was a UPS failure, yes.
So, essentially, a circuit refuse, if you will.
There are circuit... Yeah, there are circuit breakers outside of the UPS, but there's also internal circuit breakers that, when you have to do switching, it'll tell the UPS, you know, turn this breaker on, turn this breaker off, move power over here, distribute it that way. And if those lock, or if they seize up, or if they fail, they'll explode, which is what happened in this case. They did explode. And then, the system shuts down.
Yeah, these are them.
Yes. That's the UPS. Yes.
Okay. Well, colleagues, if you wanted to...
And if you can tell me what that... All that is, you can come to work for GSD.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Ruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How long does the UPS last? I mean, the energy?
So what happens is if your, the UPS serves two functions. One function is if you lose DWP power, it will carry, because it has batteries, a lot of batteries that can carry that entire load for a certain amount of time. Normally, it's 15 minutes, but you can ramp that up depending on the amount of batteries that you tie to the system. We've got hours on ours. That gives us time, it buys us time to switch over. We also got two generators at this site, so it gives us time to do transfer over to the generators, which, by the way, is usually 10 seconds. By code, we have to transfer on to emergency power within 10 seconds. So if the generators fail for some reason, those UPS batteries would carry that load for amount of hours. And we're always a little reluctant to say how many hours, because the older the batteries get, they degrade, and they don't carry the load as long as they would if they were brand-new.
So- Brand-new, how many hours would it be?
It depends on how many batteries. Yeah, I mean, like Mount Lee, for example, we've got, I think, six racks of batteries. We have like 400 batteries in Mount, 400, 600 batteries in Mount Lee, and it can last four hours. But again, it only needs 10 seconds to do that transfer, because, yes, the 10 seconds will transfer. Right, and then the other, the other purpose of the UPS is to clean, LAPD was mentioning that they have power requirements to get clean power in. DWP, we call it dirty power, so the UPS filters that dirty power that's coming in from DWP and ensures that there's no spikes that will damage the equipment that's downstream from the UPS. So those are the two purposes, the two functions of the UPS.
If we have generators, why do we have to move everyone to Van Nuys?
In this case, what happened is the generators didn't initiate, because the failure was internal to the UPS, so the UPS shut down. Normally, the UPS will say-
They couldn't filter the inner-
It'll switch, those circuit breakers allow it to switch over and move to the generator power. But in this case, because the failure was internal to the UPS, the UPS just shut down. And when it shut down, the load was dropped, we didn't have that 10 seconds to get on to generator. And when the load gets dropped hard like that, is when LAPD experiences the problems with their servers and their equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, so just for the panel in general, some general questions. Specific to the outage, was there an increase in wait time, to anyone's knowledge, or was LAFD response affected? Or were there any dropped calls?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, do we have a sense of, of the impact of that?
During that three-hour period, the average wait time before the 911 calls were answered was 1.7 minutes, and we usually answer 75% of the calls within 15 seconds. So there was a significant delay in answering 911 calls. What had happened was, the entire operation at the Metro Center went down, which was half of my personnel that were working that day. So a phone call was made to the Valley, who then readjusted everything in the Valley to take over every radio frequency in the city, and also to take over the 911 operations. So approximately half of my personnel were handling the city at the time.
And do we have a sense, is there any way to measure how many dropped calls there were?
Oh, yeah. The abandoned call at that time was 55%. Normally, the abandoned call rate in the City of Los Angeles is around 16%, and those are people that call and just don't even make contact with the Los Angeles Police Department. They abandon their call before the call's answered.
And is this window, was this window, how big was this window where the dropped calls and the delayed time happened?
This, I've got this report for about three hours, from 11 o'clock to 1400. So that's, we were completely up and running in the Valley in, in normal operations with the city, with the units out in the field in Mode 2, but we were still running CAD, and we were at citywide tac alert at 1400 out in the Valley. We had had everybody respond to the Valley, so our PM watch came on duty all out in the Valley. So that's why we ran the report till 1400, because we were pretty much up and running by 1400.
And maybe this next question is for Ted Ross, since you're here from Information Technology. In terms of upgrading the computer systems, will, will, once that is complete, will that eliminate this possibility, to your, to your knowledge, just because of our antiquated system that we're currently using and in the process of upgrading? What are your thoughts?
So there's a couple of items, Ted Ross, General Manager with ITA. One of the items is to ensure power. Power was certainly the cause of this item. So an interruption in power caused a cascade of events that led to the result. So I think on one side is to make sure that we solidify and we shore up the power side of it, and the second side is to continue to work with LAPD in the committee, so that should there be an interruption in power, we have as minimal disruption as possible. And so that's, that's some of the other lessons learned, as the commander was describing.
And you think an upgraded system will impact that positively, or is it just all about powers out and everything will fail temporarily, regardless of how advanced our systems are?
Yeah, regardless of how advanced our systems are, systems require, I was just talking with an AGM a little earlier, they require air conditioning, they require power. And so no matter how good a system is, without good AC and good power, the system's not running.
So it's all about adequate backup?
This was about the infrastructure that the system runs on top of, and so it's critical to make sure that, that infrastructure is a part of the system.
Shifting a little bit, if you will, in terms of the actual dispatch professionals, how's, how does the vacancy rate on that in general right now? I know you're staffing up.
We are. As far as staffing, we run a diagnostic every month to find out how many agents are needed to actually answer the 911 calls, and what our computer model says that we should have is 39 people answering 911 calls at any one time.
If I could, this is, that is, as it pertains to this particular incident, because the staffing certainly is relative to what would happen in an incident, and that's the nexus to this conversation.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, so our staffing should be 39 to answer the calls at the state mandate, which is 95% of the calls answered within 15 seconds, okay? So what we had that morning was we had 26 operators on duty, so that's a difference of 13. And that has to do with, we have 84 people that are in training, and they cannot answer calls by themselves, they have to be with somebody as they're being trained. And then I've got other breakdowns that have to do with sick IOD and that sort of stuff. So staffing definitely is one of the issues. Not only did we have staffing that was below what our models say that we should have, but at the time that the outage occurred, 40, we had 44 people out in the Valley that took over the entire city, which is 27 radio frequencies that they have to talk with the officers, and then they have to take over all the 911 and 912 operations also at the same time.
And do you feel that your employment pipeline and the efficiency with, with getting new people on board and independently working is adequate?
At this point, I was brought in to bring that back up to speed, and within the year and a half that we've got the backing to hire, we've, we've got it up to within 23 vacancies of, of what our mandate is. But like I said, there's still like 84 people that are not trained up to actually answer the calls. So anytime we, we get up to the TO, the authorized strength, it takes a year and a half after somebody gives us the go-ahead, before we actually are up to the strength that we, we think that we're going to be. And remember that, you know, 84 people in the pipeline, not all 84 are going to make it through the system, because we do have a attrition rate of about seven per class, and the classes are about 30 people. So we actually had, we have three classes going through, which is 90, and already six people have failed out of the class. So, the classes.
Lastly, Mr. Chair, recently, it was the Fourth of July, and the city was just up in flames with lawlessness, on fireworks everywhere. What kind of impact do you have when that occurs?
Well, we deploy the 911 center very heavily on the PM watch hours. I gave a report regarding the call load at, between 8 and 9 o'clock at night, and between 9 and 10 o'clock at night. Those two hours for this year were double the highest hour for the year. So those two hours really do tax our system as far as taking in calls.
Not to mention, like I said, the widespread lawlessness just overpowers public safety, first responders anyway. And anecdotally, I feel that this Fourth of July was the worst one ever in LA. So something is going on with illegal fireworks, but that's a whole different topic. But I know that that, that really taxes the system big time, and the police departments' and the fire department's ability to respond to calls.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions on this, we'll go ahead and go into the phone system. On this, though, did want to ask if you can get back to us on the actual costs when that is ready to go. So I think we should probably keep it in committee for that, because we've got to replace the units, there's no question, we've got to figure that out. We can't operate this way. And then on the, on the follow-up also on getting staff to each location, I'd like to add to the testing or the, the infield testing on, for these incidents, air support as well. To get from downtown in a rush hour situation and/or a major disaster, earthquake, for our redundant systems, all the way to Chatsworth or vice versa, could take hours. And you've got different personnel, taking, taking different vehicles, without any communication in their vehicles, doesn't make a lot of sense. In this situation, it certainly made sense, but we should tabletop, just to ensure that they know where to go, where an airship would pick them up, working probably with the fire department, because they can carry more personnel, and trying to get them out there, because the communications in this are going to be key in a major incident. And so I would ask that you add that to the tabletop for any exercises we do pertaining to moving personnel from each dispatch location, and they can do so in moments rather than hours.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then with that-
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Okay, one more question.
Sure.
GSD, are you guys also looking into the generators linking directly to the system so you could bypass the UPS? I know there's a 10-second delay or a 15-second delay, or 15-minute delay, actually, but-
The generators are tied into the UPS.
Right, but then the UPS failed, that's why the generator, you couldn't use the generator. But I'm saying, connect the generator directly.
Ironically enough, the maintenance that we were conducting was to add something called a wraparound on the UPS, so that we could do just that. So now both of those have been installed, and we will be able to do that if we have internal failure to the UPS in the future. But, but it's manual, so what that means is we will still drop the site for the amount of time that it takes us to make that transfer.
Right.
It'll get the site back up a lot quicker, but the site will still drop.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, on to the phone systems.
On to the phone system, thank you so much. So I think around February or March, you asked us to take a look at the phone. So around February, March, pretty much the whole entire Valley, I think it was four divisions, we lost the ability for the community to contact the front desk at our phone system. And what we found was that the phone was so outdated that we couldn't even purchase parts. I mean, it was just that difficult. And at that time, we asked for funding. So I'm going to turn it over to ITA, because they did a lot of research and a lot of going out to the different divisions and speaking to people, and I believe that they have a great model of what they want to do for our department to get those phone systems upgraded.
Correct. As this committee heard previously, in February 2017, as the commander stated, we had outages for non-emergency phone lines in Valley Police stations. Unfortunately, these are antiquated PBX phone systems from basically circa 2000, you know, Y2K era, if anyone still remembers that. The city was unable to secure funding in the last few years to replace those landlines, and these are landlines that the carriers have stayed by 2020 will be eliminated. Fortunately, however, council this last year was able to provide funding to replace phone systems in four stations, so Devonshire, Foothill, Mission, and Van Nuys, with the items that were set aside. We conducted various meetings with LAPD, we wanted to identify, it wasn't just about replacing phone systems, but seeing if there's ways to modernize communications, and even improve the way communications and done as LAPD stations. Even came down to a physical tour of Van Nuys. So we went across all floors, all units, even spent a little time in the jail. Fortunately, we were able to get out of the jail, we'd hate to see the inside of a jail for too long. The research concluded the need to replace 672 lines. We're going to be using cost-effective cloud-hosted VoIP systems, even including 35 smartphones, which I thought was really cool. Van Nuys Narcotics wanted to switch over to smartphones and kind of try that out, and other stations may want to follow after. They thought that'd be a much preferred upgrade for them. Really, all we require is a transfer of $684,000 from the unappropriated balance to the, which was the VoIP telephone systems item to ITA's general fund communications services account, so that we can get, get on to this project. The money has been set aside in the UB.
Great, and my recommendation is going to be to make that transfer and send this to council. Now, I do have a couple of questions on this, but before I open it up, I want to open it up to my colleagues first. Okay, so thank, thank you for doing this. I can't imagine having police stations without phone systems.
Correct.
That's just shocking. And, I mean, the bulk of a detective's job is on the phone. I mean, it's, it goes, we don't even have to regurgitate all the conversations we've had on this. So thank you for, and the idea of using smart systems, not just VoIP, but the idea that incoming calls, when people are put on hold, for example, can get messages or transferred to the correct departments, or we can reroute them, other major changes, the fact that you can log in online and make changes to each particular type of voicemail box, I mean, there's, it's unlimited, but a smart system where, will help the customer, the person that's calling a station or a division. And, and so I really appreciate that. With that, it brings us to another conversation regarding the phone systems, and a conversation that we've had a few times, and that is an overall full technology assessment, is well overdue on this department. And we get hit in different directions at a moment's notice with the need to purchase equipment that is either antiquated, no longer serviced, out of date, not in compliance, and we have two weeks to make a decision, and it's the first time we've ever heard about it. I, for one, on this committee, as the chair, really tired of that kind of reactive approach. And I realize why. It's part of the culture, because the department is busy doing police work and not technology. That's a reality. And we have limited staff who actually has the technology piece, who's really busy maintaining what we have. I mean, I get it, and it makes perfect sense. It's not a matter of blaming anyone. It was based in that, you know, our priorities are making sure people are safe, and it's not about necessarily technology. And that's why the partnership with you, Ted, with your department, is critically important, and it's, quite frankly, for many years, has, has, has been nonexistent, and I want to change that. And I think we all have to change that, and look to the experts and the partners within our own city to figure out, you know, this is what they're doing full-time. And a great example is bringing in VoIP. I mean, if it were up to just the old decision sort of flowchart, we would just be sending staff out there to fix it and put Band-Aids on the solution, and just try to keep fixing it. And so that's where this makes sense, and can't thank you, Commander Scott, for really stepping up and making sure that this is happening correctly in the right way. With that, I really do believe this phone system issue and the dispatch system issue needs to, we need to look at all systems, because failure in our systems is not an option. It's the backbone of operations, and if operations go down, we go down. And so with that, I'd like to ask that we place on the next Public Safety Committee agenda a conversation of what would it take to start doing and working with ITA, a full technology assessment, top to bottom, inside and out, with a long-term, a short-term and a long-term plan for technology replacement. I'm in the stations all the time, all the time, as a reserve officer and working with all of our volunteers as well. And, and I'm now working gangs, narcotics, and fugitives, I'm in a lot of stations, in a lot of divisions, and they all have the same complaints. There's a major push right now to replace the radios, and nobody's complaining- There's a major push right now to replace the radios, and nobody's complaining about the radios. And I'm not going to have that conversation here now, but I will say the major complaints are when the phone systems go down. That's a big issue. Logging into a computer takes the average officer per shift one hour. That's beyond unreasonable. Every time they sit down at a computer, it takes about 20 minutes to log into all the various databases. And if they want to call for help, the phones are down, so that doesn't really get them a lot of help. And if you can imagine 20 minutes to log you in to all the different databases to do your work, and then you leave and you come back and do it again, and you leave and come back and do it again, an hour per shift to log into a computer, multiply that by all the officers we have. It's just unconscionable that this is happening. And then, I was actually in Van Nuys Station last week, and a detective was sitting next to me doing his work in the cubicle while I was doing mine, and he hit the desk hard, and an expletive came out and said, "The city doesn't care about us. I can't believe it just took me 25 minutes to log in and it just crashed, and I got to do it again. I don't have this kind of time." And he didn't know who I was, and I'm hearing him next to me saying, "Okay, this is insane. So we need to jump on this right away and really do an assessment." The other big complaint I get, speaking of phone systems, is, I'm going to sell a company, I'm going to throw a company under the bus for a second, and I'm sure my phone's going to ring off the hook. Sprint has got to be the cheapest or system that we have for our officers. The cards in our MDTs, and that's what we're using, is these air cards, they have, you get, colleagues, you get two colors on your screen that come up in your, black and white, red and green. Red means you have no signal and you can't transmit or receive data. Green, you're good to go. Most of the time, it's red. You can't get on. The phones we're deploying, they can't get a signal. If you talk to even the command staff who have those phones, they carry their own personal phones because the city phone, the issued phones from the city, they can't get a signal. They can't reach anybody. So for whatever reason, years ago, we went to RFP and gave it to the lowest bid, and it's, from what I hear, and I've never had Sprint, and it's nothing on that company, this is the biggest complaint we get from officers, is they can't, there's no connectivity. Their phones are down, their MDTs are down, and they can't connect. So ITA, if we can work on, it's related to phones and communication and pertains to this issue, we'll bring that back for conversation on, again, looking at a full assessment of technology needs and putting our priorities towards making sure that we're investing in fixing this. Because a lot of people complain that we don't have enough officers on the street, but if it's taking officers an hour off the street each shift to log in and try to do their paperwork, that amounts to, you know, lost time doing patrol work. And so those are things I think we really need to look at. And I want to thank you because I know the department has come full circle in actually saying, "Okay, we've got to change this culture, we've got to be cooperative, we've got to work with all of our technology partners with the city." And that's a major shift in many years that it's taken, where the priority has always been ensuring public safety and working with communities, and those are great, and they're important. It's the number-one function of law enforcement, it's not the number-one function of local government. But to support that, that backbone, the operations is based a lot on technology, and we rely on it. And so working with ITA, welcome you and thank you for bringing them into the tent and all of us working together. It's going to, I think, help improve public safety in the long run. So with that, anything else on this, colleagues? So we'll go ahead and move it forward with the recommendation from both the police department as well as ITA to fund and move that money out of the UB to get those phone systems up and running, and then we'll place on the next agenda for public safety a conversation. And that's all it's going to be, and what do we need to move forward on doing a technology assessment? So, thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chair, this was just a discussion item.
Right, and there's a recommendation, so we've got to probably move that to budget and finance, the recommendation. So we'll go ahead and move that recommendation to budget and finance because then that could be taken up in that committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be the proper way to do it, rather than advancing it to council. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe now our final item is item seven on the ACE program, quarterly report.
Colleagues, anybody you guys want to... So, City Attorney here to report on the, give us an update on the ACE program. It's quarterly report as directed by council. Can you give us where we stand today? I understand that you've reviewed over 11,000 citations. For me, Mr. Chair, if I may, once you give the report, then I have a few questions.
Good morning. Rita Hernandez-Vanegas, I'm the supervising attorney for the ACE program, and Bill Mangan is here, he's our program director. At the last quarterly report, I had reviewed approximately 12,000 citations at that time from LAPD, Animal Service, Department of Animal Services, and the Park Rangers. This, just from January to June of this year, we reviewed approximately, or another 6,000. So we're up at about 18,000 citations reviewed since the inception of the program. It's about two and a half years now. We have recently, in February this year, we added Bureau of Street Services. So in this last six months, which will be in the next quarterly report, they've referred to us about 110 citations. It looks, during this period, there's 187 violators requested initial reviews out of 3,500 citations that were written by LAPD, so that's a very, very small number. Of that number, only 26 were referred for administrative hearings. We currently have a, with LAPD, a 79% process rate, so that means of the citations that are referred by the department, we process about 79% as compared to the last period that were only 69%. I'm sorry, 79% in this last quarterly report currently, we're up to 85% of all citations received that we are processing. Are there any specific questions as that, the members may have?
I do, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So one alarming issue that came up in reviewing the report, that nearly $2 million of unpaid fines. Can you just speak on that, that piece there? Apparently, I mean, when the ACE came before us, I had some concerns about, you know, folks who are taking this program seriously in response to a number of quality-of-life issues that are facing our respective districts. There's a lot of money that has not been paid.
Okay, just so I understand, it was $2 million unpaid?
Unpaid fine.
And actual paid is $875,000 or so?
Eight hundred...
That was at our last report, that took us through December of this year, and we currently have...
December of last year.
I'm sorry, December of...
Wow.
It was up to December of...
Correct.
Right. So there's been eight months of data that we don't yet have, so there might be a lot more money of unpaid.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know the exact...
Well, there's a lot more unpaid and there's a lot more collected. The program is getting stronger. This is Bill Mangan, I'm at the City Attorney's Office, I'm an administrative coordinator. For LAPD, from the beginning of the program, December 1st, 2014, right up to the end of the fiscal year, June 30, we have an overall 56% pay rate for this Los Angeles Police Department, which is remarkable for this type of program. If you look at the MTA, they're collecting about 38% overall of their fare evasion citations. Our citation process tells us that other counties such as Riverside, Riverside City hit at about 40%. So we're doing very well with LAPD considering, number one, the clientele that we're citing and the type of violations, and I'll get to that in a minute. But I've got some updates on numbers here. Actual payments collected for LAPD citations for the two-and-a-half-year period is 1.249, That's 56.19%. Our Parks and Rec, very small number of sites, only 256 citations, but we've collected 37.56% on those. And the Bureau of Street Services, although they're just getting started, they've written 110 citations that have been processed, they've already got a 41.17% pay rate. And a couple of things that affect this are the ability of the officers at the time they prepare the citation to get clear identification and an identity document. Of course, the guys that do it the best and girls are LAPD. Parks and Rec does a very good job, Street Services is doing a very good job. Where we're weakest is with animal control, because the animal control officers enforcement primarily is done by canvassers, we're not full-time peace officer personnel. We get a lot of people giving verbal identity and address identity that isn't necessarily traceable back to an identity card. In many cases, they're getting identity documents issued in other countries. And so we've seen some improvement in that since the SDEO bill passed that allows undocumented people to get a driver's license or identity card, and so we're getting a little better identity out of those. But the weak point is Animal Services. LAPD, in fact, is carrying the program. Now, when it comes to collections...
You have a breakdown of...
Not in my district.
Yeah, but you have a breakdown of the collections of those issued from LAPD versus those issued, because that's not in the report.
Yes, yes.
Where's that on the report?
It is, I believe it should be...
Oh, what page?
It's on, LAPD, it's on page four. For this quarterly, it was 746,000 and change from LAPD, 89,000 from Animal Services, and 5,000. And since this report, we have added, as Bill indicated, Bureau of Street Services, which has a collection...
Well, I'm sorry, what this doesn't break down, that's what I was looking at, it's got 746,000 from LAPD, but it doesn't say the percentage of... They, clearly LAPD wrote more as well.
Yes.
So it's a higher number, of course, but it doesn't have a percentage of LAPD, the ones that they cited, their collection rate has been X versus any other department.
I believe Bill just indicated that they are at about 56% pay collection rate, and actually CID, Criminal Investigation Division, who writes citations for the 52 permits that we issue, they're at 90% collection rate.
Well, because those are going to be permitting issues, right.
Right.
It's a fixed business, that's a different, that should be nearly 100%, right.
LAPD overall is at about 56% collection rate.
And Animal Services is at?
11.62.
11.6, because the dog probably ate the citation.
Oh, boy.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, and oftentimes, they don't have contact with an individual, so the ordinance does require that you template a personal service, so they'll knock on a door, and if no one's there, they'll just post it and mail it. And, you know, when we get the returned mail, once we processed it, you know, we'll try to look for it. Some of them are property owners, some are in trust, so we work with the department to try to do some of the research on those cases. So as Bill indicated, it's tough when you don't actually have a person in front of you who's signing a document.
Got it, that makes sense, okay.
I can, Mr. Chair, of the $2 million of unpaid fines, does that also account for those who opted for community service? So instead of the community service, they're not paying?
Well, that is a small portion. If a person during the initial review phase, which is your first contact, you've got 20 days, once you receive that citation, it says notice of violation and fine payment due, if you tell us that you were unable to pay the fine because we will have no contact with you otherwise, and whatever the circumstances may be, we will refer that to our neighborhood justice program, and if they have no prior criminal history, that program will take them in, they will have a panel, that panel will adjudicate, if you will, what their responsibility is. Oftentimes, there's no fine payment involved. It could be community service, it could be, you know, writing a letter to maybe that property owner if it was a vending issue or things like that, so...
Who picks their penalty or service?
I'm sorry?
Who decides what their...
Community.
Community service is going to be? Who makes that decision?
There's three panelists that are trained by the City Attorney's Office in our neighborhood justice program, and they decide, you know, the fate of that individual.
I didn't realize that, but I want you guys to...
When they're referred to neighborhood justice, we also have, when we determine that the person is homeless, they are referred to our HART program, our homeless engagement and outreach team, and we have monthly citation clinics, and Mr. Mangan is the first person at the door doing the intakes, and if they have an ACE citation, we refer them for community service. We monitor it, and they will do four hours for every citation if they're in fact homeless.
Go ahead, Mitch, I have a couple of... Oh, thank you. Just real quick, this three-member panel you're talking about, are they, is it a volunteer corps, or is it, are the individuals...
They're private persons, they're volunteers.
Yes, they're volunteers who are trained in mediation-type skills.
Resolution sort of system?
Yes, yes.
And are any sort of prior violations or any sort of criminal background check done on the individuals that are brought before these panels? Just out of curiosity.
As to the panel members themselves?
No, no, no.
Oh, as to the cited party?
Cited person.
Yes, if they have a prior criminal history, they are not able to get referred to the panel.
Right, so it's a different...
Yes, it is different.
Enforcement slash...
Yes.
Whatever the system... So, question, notwithstanding the unpaid fines that we need to collect, I think the ACE program is already successful in many ways, and I hope that, you know, that gets addressed, and I'm fully supportive of it. But colleagues, what I'm really concerned about is to make this successful, and we know that the ACE program may very well be utilized once we get a vending ordinance in place as well. My concern is that, say you have repeat violators of, you know, someone who's been cited for an ACE violation, say it's allowed at Party House or whatever, right? We have one in my neighborhood, and the ACE program has effectively shut them down, and the whole neighborhood's delighted. But my question would be, at what point does an infraction become advanced to a misdemeanor? Because without that ability to do that, then anything we do will just be fruitless because people can just blow it off.
Right, with the exception of vending, everything in the municipal code is, about 95% are misdemeanors. There are some that are infractions, anything that relate to parks. We have the discretion to file a misdemeanor charge pre-processing or at the initial review phase. So when we see that maybe it is a repeat violator, we'll look at filing a misdemeanor. I have filed misdemeanors on some scalping matters, and one, it was a drinking in public, but the citation said, you know, gang members drinking beer and smoking weed, so I ran it, they were part of, this individual's part of an injunction, so I went ahead and I filed that as a misdemeanor, which the court would say, "You're filing a drinking in public as a misdemeanor." But I also filed the probation violation for the gang case. So we do have the discretion to file everything as a misdemeanor or infraction, if it's an infraction, other than vending.
Right, and I'm not suggesting here go heavy-handed right away off the bat because someone does something wrong, but if we don't retain that tool to escalate into a misdemeanor, then we effectively are enacting toothless laws. And I think that's something that we have to keep in mind for all of these things we support in moving forward. Otherwise, a violator can just say, "You know what? It's an infraction, no sweat off my back, I'll just keep doing what I'm doing."
Councilman, we've been attending the meetings, planning, you know, the recommendation that will be coming forward to the council on permitting and vending, so, you know, I can't really discuss any details, but I can tell you this, that they're very cognizant of having a balanced type of program where there'll be enough information obtained prior to issuing some permit, where people can be tracked and monitored and determine whether or not they are repeat violators or flagrant violators. And I think that, as ACE is part of the enforcement mechanism on that, it will work very well with what we're doing. We will have the opportunity upon presentation of an offense to determine their status in that regard and divert them over to criminal enforcement if need be.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you. I just, we all want the programs that we effectuate to be successful, and I think that that satisfies a lot of the concerns I have, so I'm glad to hear it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to point out on the illegal vending, it's one of the low, I mean, it's only 2 and 1/2% of all the ACE citations. only 2 and 1/2% of all the ACE citations. I know, you know, because of pending ordinances and legislation, it's not heavily enforced to begin with. So, it's a fraction of the reality. But I know Mr., Councilmember Rue has a couple of questions, if I could, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know there's a collection issue, but I do know that the ACE program has done well overall, and I know a lot of constituents are very happy about that. But, you know, I think it's worthwhile if we could begin exploring the incorporation of possibly LADBS.
Yeah, no, that was going to be my recommendation.
Oh, great, great, then, I guess I'll, let's take it over, but yeah, but it may help clean up the city's lean processes and more effectively push property owners and landowners to comply with the law and create more enforcement options for the department. And I know Councilmember Farrell, I mean, all of us have problems with that, so, with your consent, Mr. Chair, if you could.
The action, I'm going to ask for that.
Okay, so I'll just leave that.
And we have had conversations and met with both Building and Safety and Housing Department. They are set to be rolled in as a, you know, department during this pilot phase, and it appears that Housing Department may be first to be issuing citations. So, we're working with them on a list of violations. Some of your colleagues have approached me and have some issues about the type of violations that they don't want to see ACE, if you will, so we will work.
Some may, some may not.
Right, so, we will put before this committee the list of proposed violations, as we have, so that you may, you know, vet that list.
Great.
So, I can, really quick, if I may.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, so, where does 5611 fall into ACE? I don't see that as foreign to the list of general categories. Why is it not listed?
Because our office has made, and LAPD, a determination that that is not subject to a fine, that they would prefer to work with that individual on services.
I mean, that's. But that doesn't make any sense. Who's made that determination?
Is that on the, that's, I'm not sure, when we've originally.
I got people defecating and urinating in public. People are posting photos on Facebook.
Well, they are able.
They have, like Mitch, Mr. Farrell mentioned, you have to have teeth for this stuff. Otherwise, it's a free-for-all, it's a Wild Wild West. This is exactly, colleagues, why I had an issue with this program when it launched, and it's a failure, I'm sorry. I have 30 citations in my district in this filing period. It's horrible.
Well, that's.
And all hell's breaking in.
Mr. Buskin, to that point, we have a homeless parolee drug addict blocking a sidewalk down my street right now, and I just got a text about it, and I've been involving the Northeast Police Department on this issue. Total 5611 situation, and the guy should not be there, and he's a parolee, and he's a drug addict. So, yeah, to think that maybe we can't even handle that, I think is pretty inexcusable. Now, mind you, what you just said, in terms of a parolee, that could be a different category. However, your concern is very real, and it is affecting all of our neighborhoods. If we can't, if we have no teeth to actually enforce.
Right, right.
Keeping our rights of way open, and it's a low-level, you know, criminal with no.
And I'm all for, Mr. Farrell, I'm all for with, you know, offering resources.
Yeah.
But when they are refusing resources, constantly refusing resources, this is when it becomes, continue to become a quality-of-life issue.
Let's dial it back for one second, and if I can ask, why are we not including 5611?
That was not on the list that LAPD originally submitted to us, and there was.
Make that recommendation.
Well, we can do that, we can add it, okay.
And I will go back, and I will.
That's exactly what this discussion is all about, so.
And I will talk back, and I believe at some point, that section may have been subject to some injunction.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So, that maybe have been.
It was at one point, and there was some litigation at the point, and we've sort of moved beyond that, but.
So, I will take your recommendation, and I will work with both our municipal branch and our criminal branch to advise them that you would like to see that section added.
I would, if I. So, I think what we're going to do is by action, instead of recommendation, is an instruction to add it to the program, is what I see where we're going with this as a panel, so we appreciate that, and thanks for working with us on this.
Yes, thank you.
Obviously, you can see that we're all pretty heated about where we're at on some of these issues, and that's why working together is critically important. And so, I think we've got two recommendations that'll be coming out now. Colleagues, if you want to add anything else, one is going to be that we will instruct that ACE add 5611 to the program, and the other to add both housing and DBS. I know this was a pilot. Clearly, we're all excited about it. We would like collections to go up, and we're going to continue to have that conversation on what we can do to help you improve the collection system and what we need to do on the back end, because it's not up to the city attorney's office to figure out how to improve some of the collections from the other departments, and that's what we're all about as well. So, that partnership's going to be critically important, and so we all appreciate you stepping forward on that.
Well, when it's on a positive note, as far as what I have to say, I just, the ACE program is helping our neighborhoods. Yeah, the incidence of loud, raucous, out-of-control, all-night parties across my district have died way, 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 way down. I think it's because of the ACE program. So, in terms of, I remember two and a half years ago, having these conversations about how the ACE program can increase our quality of life in our neighborhoods, so I do think it's having an effect, and I think these steps we take moving forward will be even better. So, I want to thank you for your work on that.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, add a recommendation. I'd like to hear from the city attorney in light of the 5611, what the filing rate is, has been, the filing rate on 5611 thus far.
For criminal filing?
Yes. Because I'm hearing that it's not happening.
Well, it's also, we can only file what's presented to us, so if there are no arrests made or citations written by the police department, then there's none for us to consider.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am. I respectfully disagree with you. I have officers who are working their asses off. I have a quality-of-life team in my district, specifically in the Harbor area, and they're coming to me saying they're doing their job, but they're not filing the damn cases. Sorry.
I will look into that.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, let's do this, because I hear the same thing, but, you know, you talk to 10 officers, you get 12 different answers. Talk to 10 city attorneys, you get 15 different answers, so I'm not sure. But I think we'll get to the bottom of it. We all have a tremendous interest in this, and it's, in fact, it's impacting all of us every single day. It's the number-one issue we're dealing with. With that, this, I believe my colleagues would like to move forward with two action items to move the city council. One is to add 5611 for a citable offense under ACE, and then two, to add DBS and housing to ACE as well, and to do so immediately, and start getting them trained and work on the citations, and those lists of citations, let's go ahead and do this, if we can move that to council, and then also schedule, in the next, in one of the next Public Safety Committee meetings, we'll schedule another conversation, which will be to discuss some of the issues that came out under 5611. We'll ask LAPD to be here at the table, and not just one department, not just the city attorney's office, but we can hear it directly, and not what the problem has been, because I don't think that's productive, but what are we going to do to fix it moving forward? And if there's, the will has changed politically to make sure that those enforcement issues on 5611 are taking place, then we need to make sure that our various partners and the departments and the city attorney's office are all working together to ensure we're actually prosecuting and filing and arresting on those. And so, I think that conversation desperately needs to take place. With that, colleagues, are there any other issues before us?
Done.
Nope, okay.
Thank you.
So, that'll be the recommendation from this committee. That concludes the agenda, and we are adjourned.
Okay.
Oh, we had the technical correction before the adjournment. So, while we're all still here, not adjourned yet, the technical correction on item 16 for the date will be?
It's, instead of September 30th, 2017, for the end of the contract, it's February 8th, 2018.
Okay, then that technical correction will be accepted, and now we are officially adjourned. And colleagues, we need to get down to council, it is 10:00 a.m. Thank you.